Masiperula vomo Kashi she, kashi she, kashi she katola Isho pato minira Nige cheka malepa Desi wadju fofa ire Ato utoda ra Omojua niye Mosi ipo etore Niwoni imole Mopowa dula wa
Adbelo laro, alkololo sonle keleke onani oni efun Iwobaye, nijodire, ibadina odidi Boukwaye, awanani wanigun Eje ki eku fulele, komagbea ti olo Uweani leya, abakoto fini goseli Okiti foryo, kitishi ye ube Omibaye, onani leya, diaba tanile Ego leja, omule tagma Akiba kata loa, kiti Go se ne tibera oni, owom Orukote ni, uji para maboro Onani motuti dediwa katya woi Ni bobo, egbe sorosoro, toje ti leu duwa Awana tunde, bi she wa biashimande, niyotomejo Le i, ti uma wanyeni bobo jo weneze Akasi etoum, oni otuma wanyenloni Ni bati ye niye wa ti, untia feke matou Ti e ti matou, ta feke bo, ti e uti bo Ni bati, awa lejuwa, ti awa tuwa nulé Tiwa yu manya nané, fua loni, emini kakoni Madali etui, moni ya ni lege, niye dokto sani To batwa asiku, oba bena moni abami Eh, baba wa ulubedu Ni egbe ti, awa domadali etuti toni Line ifya, kokwenye niye wa sufu Eh, wapata, niyagbaro long Ipano yokero tobi, kunito si eni koka wa Loni, kini awanti afeke me ye u Ki la awanti afeke, nyagla wateveki ama Onani, awo maso, loni Eni ya koko, ti, wa koba wa soro Onani, awa lejuwa, ti, wa wa la niwa loni Awanani kaka koba wa sorona To ri, untia ye niye, ti e difema Onani, be, ni boni oroke, seliti, be jo ti akbe Be, oyekia, fyo kme Si, fifagile, inye Constitution, eliti anlu Ni olili relocation, eh, eliti debe Onani, onda wa, lasile Eliti ya pasiti leje, le yo fwa niya fani Ati oportunitela, ti be, kilayuruba Kodaduru, ni ayi Opalo, opalo, kasebe, akilo de Chepadi shalotuka ni, che atutimukame Moro yurubane shayeni, hm, che si lepe yuruba Moni ya la loro, tiya balla, waniko kye Eli, onani ya abawa twa wanle Onani ya bawa la, be, ta wambati la To bati, oni kulu kuwe, di tiha she shomi pe Ki abri constitution, iliti yu wanyeni Milio, sonlati, kye leshakoma liwaye Edita segno, olosi lejo Onani, wa bawa yana nanani, oni Baba wa, ba she gung Mowa, nikalek, melua, bye baba Ah, aweni ye wa, mofebo, lati ordoi Be, kinidi, ti ye shekwe ye jo Ati be, ni boni ye jo, hm, ni boni Odeduru, afi towo towo, tiya, muletiya, mule Afipu baba wa, ba she gung Be, wa kabo, si, ah, ni wa Aweni ya, si febo, eh, be, onti, mofe mwa fua loni Ekabo sababa
Ekaleo, eh, thank you very much for inviting me Eh, modupelo, oigo Inu imandu lati, amabaye soro From time to time, eh, so, modupelo, oigo Unkota, ekoko be, lo, mi ne be Kilode ta, losile ejo Cherry, omonuwa, bilawa, we are civilized people Awa, umbe ban, abeki ni, ino We are civilized people And we like to do things the civilized way Yele afen, losi court And what, the case is that, this is Unkota, sorry, oh important really, because Unkota, asoni be And what he, oja, ose luwa The people who claim to be our leaders They, they use the constitution, one low constitution ye To treat us with impunity One, one da wasi One kama, rope ye ye niwa Charo, me ye, one rope ye ye niwa One da wasi ala, one kama, she kaka to uwa Because they say that the constitution allows them to do it And that constitution is a fraud Kilode ta, pre constitution, ye, any fraud Ni bati, Abdul Salamito called decree Decree number twenty-four of May nineteen ninety-nine Ma to call decree, eh Omo ipe, omo ipe, olati ba Referendum la, la, la wa weyo On, on, he understood He understood that he has to seek The permission, the ratification of the people He knew it, omo, unkoto fi kosino, kini epe We the people, ye, charo me ye Unkoto fi ko, we the people, ye To rekomai, ipe, only di awa yo To ratify the constitution Charo, epe, Nigeria is a signatory To the African Charter of Democracy Which says that constitution must have, eh Eh, keno koruke, must be ratified Our, Nigeria is a signatory This is, we are not, eh, you know Nigeria signed the treaty Ife, you need the ratification of the people You need a referendum before you can say A constitution is legal So, what we are doing, koka ta afen, losi court, nipe We, we are directly challenging The legitimacy of elections in Nigeria Under the nineteen ninety-nine constitution Unkota, riki, eh, but constitution Niye de yurubama, epe, eh, 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 dalaniye Oh, eh, ya, eh, eh, yuwar Constitution is what you, you say This is my, this, this, this are my rules Constitution ye, olo deka mope Kini, baoli, lucia, eh, se, baoli, lucia, eh, jo Ba, constitution, lo deka mwe Constitution, lo, lo ya, ka mope Bah, she ma, she election, leo, bah, she she election, leo Charo me ye Ti constitution, ya, toba di appe Oro, joroni, oro, lini, oro, roni Once the constitution is fraudulent You cannot have a valid election Under a constitution that is fraudulent Koseche So, we are in court that we want to make it clear Cherry, bobo, awa, ose luwa That are trying to tell us that their standing Their local standard, their standing Is dependent on this constitution We are telling them that they are not one of us They are not part of us
Recording in progress
That they have no, eh, got it That they have no standing Latiman, sofwa epe, eh, awa, eh, awa, shiba Weshaw, one, one, lema, diwa, anoma Because the constitution, they cannot say The constitution is telling us That is, that is, you're wrong Because the constitution is faulty The other question, ta wa, ye ma, be mini Wait, why now? Kilode ta, fe, she ni se Well, the reason why we are doing it is simple Is that, this is the time To epe, ani, governorship, eh, election, yuva la Charo me ye, tele, tele, is everywhere But on this occasion, we have this opportunity To epe, election, governor Of Shunyu, Attikiti, stand alone So,unkota, asoni be, ah, fe, no she election ye Ni, oshu, Attikiti That's what we are saying, we do not want Any election in Oshanga, Attikiti And we are not going to do, use, eh Eh, violence or anything, no That's why we have got to court Because omonuwa, bilawa Omonuwa, be niwa, awa opisi, eto ama De, ko banka, kuya, tugo be So, the reason why we are doing it, awa, olikama she Eh, 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 let me make this clear Ah, nika ma she election, dibobi u Unkota, asoni be, ah, fe, election, yuva la Under the nineteen ninety-nine constitution Which is a fraudulent, document That's, that's all we are saying Ah, fe, ah, fe, she ni, 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 le yuruba Ela she pobi u, ah, nika ma she The other question, ta wa, ye ma, be, lo, mi ne be Why do we have to, ah, kilode ta, kadiye, fe, lepe Well, you know, olo, amo, she bobe, ibau But kilode, why? Ta wa fe, act And there are two, maybe three reasons for that The first one, nipe, bi, amalabi, se, constitut Tati, constitution, eh, be, waka, ru Be, abi, be, eh, ru, eh, ru la je Charo me ye, that, I think we are slaves We have to tell them that we are not slaves Awa, o she, we are not slaves We yuruba are not slaves to anybody The second reason, the second rep Oluwa, onon, lo fiwasi le Onon, lo fiwasi, ile yuruba Ti se lo be, so, it is our god given right To determine our future Wa tabasor, okini, ya maso Be, the twelve, the twelve, eh, area was state Kili, kili, she, our twelve area was states They decided that, eh, they want to be Sharia One Sharia la, o fe she So, what did they do? They passed the law to, so They themselves are already seceded from Nigeria One, baki, go, kama, se, bi, go bowa When you kini la, o, se, reala, o fe she That's what we are doing Now, the other thing, to epe, come on, nipe The constitution, the Charter of the United Nations The Charter of African Union Nigerian law itself allows self determination Obaki, akata, niyo, neratiwa Shebi, omati, eh, was per, ti, eh Ibohu, losi court, mad Ti, eh, I think it was, eh, justice Justice, Akitola, to die, jo, epe You are entitled by law To campaign for self determination That's what he said So, that's the reason, ta fe, ah, awa, ubeni kaka ja Awa, nika ni kaka ma, wa, Nigeria Awa, opafe, she mandi Awa yuruba, oro, eh, uti to, awa, she ma That's what we are saying So, okay, kilo, atiwa, sheba you What have we done so far? And it's very simple On the fifteenth of March, we went to court We filed cases in Oshobo Federal High Court And Adukit Federal High Court And then we got dates, be Idota, ma, go, case, you Thirtieth of, eh, April, okoko, fua ni Oshu, but, what he changed the date, ye, ba Seventeenth of May, eh, ma, ba, bu Seventeenth of May
Seventeen of May
Yes, so, Oshobo is seventeenth of May Now, tiye, kiti, still the same, otiye, kiti, oya to Charo me ye, tiye, kiti, otiye, oya to That is still, eh, keno, eh, still on the Twenty-eighth of April, ni, next week Next week, leo Charo me ye, next week, leo, next week is, eh, twentieth Eh, shen in twentieth, eight days from now
Eight day, oko, jama, jama, eh Eh, eh Ti, ele to wanyeni, eki ti, ye ma, wanyeni Eh, on the twenty-eighth, you know, su tiya, wa, eki i
Exactly, exactly
Tiwa, wanee, eki ti, tabi towa, kaki, la, be, eki ti Kini tiye, fe, kwa, shelo, jo, baba
All right, okay, kise, eki ti, niko
Beni
Kise, eh, la, fe ka, kise, eh, awa, make, kiti, niko, la, fe ka, lo This is a case for all yuruba, bobo, ali Bobo, ali, kini, ha, fe, to All of us, so, we
Eh, 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 okay, ba Kama to wa, ti, no, kama, ti, no, kama, ti, no Awon, laboshinwa, oke, kere, lata, ribi, amo
Oh Oh, eh, okay, ba
Koget, 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 eh, kiti, nikalo, ye, kini, da, do, loni, kiti To tabani, kanya, kama, bolati, milio, son Etowa, fa, wa, to, ba, lewa Tony, to, le, fi, potetare, kusiwala Subu, wa, to, bani Ke, awa, twa, wanee, re, kiti, kiwa, tu, ya, kiwa, tu, ya Ya, de, ash, de, ring, nothing less than a millions yuruba Tiwa, wa, ni, no, kosi, lo, dona
Eh, 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 there are, what, three, three million, eh, people in the city Four, five billion people, Oshu is two million Eh, ha I mean, so, we have enough people, at the Losi court Kise, pa, ni, kaka, ah, weyo Unkati, bo, fe, sofa, wo, ye, re Awa, oja, ah, beni, kaka, ja Ah, ni, ke, Losi, be, ke, ba, da, ke, be, eh, eh We are going there peacefully And we are going peacefully because The Echoa Court has just made a ruling And the ruling of the Echoa Court, nipe You cannot, that Nigeria does not have the powers To stop peaceful protesters Charo me ye, Nigeria does not have the powers To stop people protesting peacefully Echoa Court, yes, yes, so, eh We are quite happy for everybody, kibo, wa, Losi be Orderly, peacefully, just show our faces So that people will know That we are entitled to leave Nigeria where we live Ta wa, ye ma, ti, posi, is better So, that is what, eh, they, they want to, to, eh, kisafu Bo, be, ya, niyo We must not fail this court case, oh Ah, go to fail the court case, you Because our prosperity, history will not forgive us, oh History will not forgive us at all If we fail, we cannot fail, we cannot afford to fail at all Ah, le, ba, kini, ye, jo So, as many of us as possible, lo, ye, ka, Losi Court, eh, ni, on the, eh, twenty-eighth of April Ni, Adukititi, on the seventeenth of May Ni, Oshobo, that's what we want to do Charo me ye
Baba, eh, ni, ha, o, go to fail, ye Aweni ya, ta, o, wa, kaka, kya, ba, ye Ona, wo, ga, la, si, la, fini, fail, ye
By giving your support Giving your support, so
Niye, ye, kiwa, tu, ja, de Lati, eh, eh, ye, ye, jolo, dona La, e, she, eh, eh, akwa, wa, pe, u, ja, gi, di, ja, ga Kiwa, wa, pe, u, wa, ti, o, monuwa, bi, ele, ti
Exact
Mama, kiwa, pe, luwa, monuwa, bi, ele, ti Relating, boi, la, se, no, baba, wa
Exact
Ilie, jo, le, ti, o, anta, ti, a, shilolo, wa, wa, i Fan, fan, ni, re, a, ti, minani Baba, waniko, bo, wa, katya, katya, de Niye, ni, o, jo, eh, kedi, di, ni
Twenty-eight
Twenty-eight, twenty-eighth of April Niye, o, no, shudawa, i
And seventeenth of May
Eki ti, be, o, bowa, ni, eki ti, High Court Bo, be, ye, ome, eki ti, onani, eh, ting, boi, i Bo, be, pata, pata, ona, fe, ke, tu, ya, ke, tu, ya, ya, de Baba, shokoya, o, go to fail, ye Mo, si, niye, ona, ta, le, be, niye, ba, tiye, ba, ti, tu, ya, ya, de Ni, di, da, to, monuwa, bi, la, i, mo, ada La, i, mu, iba, la, i, mo, o, ko
Exact
La, i, mo, u, u, i, ja, ka, ka, da, ni
Exact
Wa, fe, o, nu, wa, be Da, ni, la, be, constitution, ye Awa, o, ma, la, bi, awa, ma, ina, o, duwa Ah, o, she ma, moni, ti, ah, wa
Exact
Fe, ki, e, washi, niye Et, eswa, ju, baba
Exact, eh, thank you very much, eh There is one important question, to man, be me, every time Every time I get this question, epe Awa, Nigerian government, corruption, eh, tipodi Be, wa, corrupti, be, wa, ni, de, ki, awa, da, jo, she, mo Wa, ti, wa, lu, la, be, le, wa, she, ba, wa, she, wo Eh,unkota, ni, soni, ipe It is possible to corrupt the judges But on this occasion, it is difficult and unlikely Charo me ye, kise, kato, etan, le, she, ni Eh, bi, eh, ti, si, cha, ti, jo, o, she, she, be Because, eh, there are five reasons, four, five reasons Number one reason, ipe, the judge, the judges, eh There are two judges, charo, keto, a, de, judge, ikone Ose, ah, sopama, o, ose, kafule, eh, o, la, be, le But, me, ji, ni, wa, o, kise, charo Ni, kawa, la, de, kiti, ni, kawa, lo, shobo And there are different ethnicities, they are not the same Eh, ethnic, eh, eh, place, not iwa There are different ethnic, eh, eh Wa, kise, omo, lukana, ni, bobo, o La, ome, je, ni, kawa, kuri, ni, kawa, be, ni So, eh, as, o, shiro, de, la, la, ti, la, ti, le, ma She, mago, mago The other thing, ipe, the government of Buhari Is now a lame duck government Charo me ye, eh, ni, omo, eh, kena, pe, lame, duck, ni Ba, be, actually, translates, lame, duck, ni Eh, papa, ye, ti, o, lesa, abi, she, kata, ma, keni Peta, ye, ti, o, lesa Because the election for the presidency is going on now So, eh, these people no longer have the power She, alba, la, ta, ni, tele, tele, na, fi, she, ba, o, o, ni, bo, ba, abo, ba, ma, ba, la, eh, tabai Is finished, so, eh, we don't have to worry about them And I suspect, that is why Oye, Tola, the governor of Oshu State Has been used as a proxy Charo, epe, we, eh, after, ta, fua, ni, de, ti Thirtieth of April, la, ti, she, case, ni, eh, Oshobo Ni, oye, Tola, governor of Oshu State, roba, dasi Only, o, oba Unkota, rep, unkota, kilo, filo, oba Only because he will not be, eh, because he, he is entitled to be re-elected Omo, yuruba, awa, yuruba, so, pe, ah, fe, si, lo, pe, rumo Ah, fe, ba, je, ye, oya, je, omo, yura, so, ma, pe, ah Ofe, je, je, election, eh, le, ke, diu Oti, shodo, meriu, oti, fe, shodo, meri, siu So, eh, ye, omo, yuruba, ma, di, a, si, for, Mary This governor, in one of his secondary schools Which is, the, the picture is going on, the video is going on Eh, eh, kena, koruke, viral everywhere
Where is that?
Iwa, omo, secondary school, wa, long, ya, be, obo Ah, 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 in, ba, temi, wa, ni, le, we Ni, the primary school, ni, in the village We had Salanga, and I'm talking of the fifties In the fifties, we had Salanga in my primary school Eh, wa, ni, secondary school, wa, li, base, wa, li, o, ah Ni, two thousand and two
Ha
Ah, 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 I mean, it's so difficult to want to And this is a man who wants to be, who wants to be re-elected again Awa, omo, secondary school, Losalanga, ni, yurubala Ah, ah, olo, mama, di, ari, kati, oda
Ah, ni, baba
The man who, eh, the man, so, so, that's the, so, so, that's the second Buhari's government is a lame duck Second one is this What people don't realize, ipe, the, the, eh Judges have what is called inherent powers The inherent powers, nipe, when they, when they decide the case Tickets, ye, to, bati, ni precedent, we want, she, re, eh Till law, obawa, against the case, ye A judge can decide, because it is a matter of justice Cherry, case, ito, awa, eh, jo, to, wa, ni Osho, wa, ta, adukiti, kosi, re, eh, Nigeria Charo me ye, charo me ye, o, si, re, eh And therefore, to, ba, ti, si, re, eh The, the question of precedent, eh Does not, does not take place Charo me ye, and that is the problem So, eh, eh, what people don't realize, ipe Even the fraudulent constitution, thanks on you Of, eh, of, eh, nineteen ninety-nine, thanks on you Charo, epe, section six, constitution, eh Talks about the inherent powers of the courts Section, ni, ni, kini, ye, ni Says inherent powers of the court So that even the fraudulent constitution Recogn, eh, second, section six, recognizes That courts have inherent powers So, the other thing is this That Awadajo, they like to make history I wanna, eh, they like their names in light Charo, epe, Iru, eh, Joti, Akitola, she, ni, Ibad Tony Ibohu was entitled to, eh, eh, campaign for self determination His name will forever be associated with that case Shebi, fe, la, government, la, ma, wa, la, ma, appeal, appeal, ya, ona Eh, appeal, na, da, appeal, ta, la, ma, appeal, da Ta, 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 wa, je, kwe, ya, ma, appeal, appeal, ye, 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 yu, ro, ni, bo, be Wa, appeal, la, ma
Do, riti, avan, de, la, ye, ti, 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 ye, o, ni, o, siu, eh, mo, solon
Eh, 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 that is, so, one, eh, that is, so, one more thing about, eh This, eh, we, only corrupti, Adajo
Okay, sir
We, only, ma, postpone the case, law, eh, si, la, la, lot, la Koseche, be, because this case is about stopping the election You cannot, there is nothing else you can do If you are going to stop the election, you can't have the You cannot be postponing the case, on, and on, and on Because you have to, at some stage If you keep postponing it, you can't have the election And also,unkota, o, keni, interloper, three, injunction Ali, be, re, la, wa, Adajo, ipe Post up, eh, any preparation for the election So, if we do that, then they all have to come to court To explain why the election should be, eh, why the cases should be postponed So, eh, ro, eh, ro, ba, eh, me Finally, eh, jo, eh, je, ki, she, admati, me, ki, to, ma, lo Eh, jo, we still need, eh, people to donate money for the court case Which is www dot ilano uk dot org www dot ilano uk dot org, eh, org dot org So, you can donate through there You can also donate through our bank account Which is, eh, the bank account is Ilano UK Limited Ilano UK Limited, and the account number is at Lloyd's Bank The account number is six nine five seven nine five six two Six nine five seven nine five six two, that's the account number The salt code is three zero nine eight nine seven Three zero nine eight nine seven Eh, jo, the, the, we don't have enough money We need more money, and we, we know we can do it We must not fail, we cannot afford to Thank you very much for inviting, eh, she, gone, you Back to
Eh, ma, solon, eh, ye, wa, ti, eh, o, wanle, or, relating, boi, ipe Intu, wa, bedani, eh, intuni, lo, pe, ki, awa, niye, ki, a, supporti, ma, ni Ti, o, si, ni, lo, o, lo, lo, lo
Thank you
Fuen, ti, eh, 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 rich, wa, eh, eh, rich, eh, kanu, na, wa, ti Ah, ah, je, sorosoro, media, la, ti, le, kasi, wa, mo, be, la, go, lon Bugama, yuruba, onani, ma, fe, ki, si, ya, ba, ja, de, bu, o, eh, jo Kojele, ti, you, fe, fo, ye, na, yuruba Eh, ye, yosi, wa, na, kola, ipe, ye, na, yuruba, na, ti, bu, ya, ju La, ti, ba, la, wa, kuro, ni, o, o, kwe, la, go, lon, ti, abato, pe, i To, riki, be, afek, ye, tu, yu, wa, ma, je, ti, be, ato, pe Nga, jo, me, jo, pe, ke, tong, wa, be, ti, o, non, to, i O, ba, to, de, ni, agba, lon, ma, be, ti, abato, pe, i Eh, o, to, da, wa, lo, kashi, le, dumari Ah, dupe
I, I have no problems at all, they're back in a million. I show, um, the call, they will believe, the car, the castle, they be give the bar, the cat, we are you. And the cool, Bushelow, your foundation now, and basha rational, who were an issue. You should do what they need, like, they should be a castle, or, as you, or, 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 she, any version, any culture, any version.
Allo, c'est Hé, 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 ça, hé, mon doublé À ce coach, on est formé Bon, on va dire que, à mon côté, à moi, à la guerre média Et donc, on est à la guerre, du 20 ans Eh, qui ont tous les bails, à moi, y'a, y'a, y'a À moi, quand il y'a nil, taba de la ley, t'as ma belle, wa, wa Ni, pè, de l'as, eh, quatre fichiers, brè, à cabiché, de l'as sixteen years
Arro ni ele jossin, ele ti ouani ah Edakon Ele jossin itoua ni ah onara paris Ni youti mawaye Ni ah I be I want here like a see Mokwe inti ebafedarako Mawa lati mikya ye yo jo Koli koli laire ni Number ti epoua si onani ah two four zero Three eight six One one six Tabi two four zero Three eight eight One two one seven Onara paris I wanna ni wakbe ayayaye eh anma audit festify Ni wakbe si leton shekbe ni wakbe thanksgiving service We itui dupe le ti mawaye ni le jossion Fubogwai iti ebafemada da Ni ba eh bi jossion bi oshilo atetarave darapobamwa Yala lorisum new yala nifiscale new Ele kasiya wana number Le ti asosita i Orono yonawa lowa orono yosi ba bubo Be ati yewa Kosi utokere ju ti yonli fidukbe fong long So edakwe dabo Edja kiboba ki ajokpe ju Ah kajokpe si si bi itui dupe Hmm eh thanksgiving service le ti mawaye Ni ojoketa ah osu ah kj although twenty twenty two ti awa ni mwayi
I be ajokpe Badua biati ba ajokpe I be Ashi moni deje ni jesu ma Adépadi inu nisho This way with all you Anyway like combo pre babawa Babawa Arro boyi Kabawa soroloni Z zino petition to law Kabawa son gotaba moi little bit about it Le yé matuwa kobe ba da fata Bribidou Kondaba yo yes noro Waski topu babawa this uro Lati akokoli ni kolosorati gurubere kokon Edja ki wa doctor sabi Che doctor sabi wa dule adwazi daddy Koka ba soroko Just one of two voice Komé ekowa koli ni kola ba deba Che doctor sabi wa dule adwazi daddy
Hello Salé okoki boboa Kalakata ni vikiti etingboa ni vikiti Eh tetimwa atenze maboa ni ojoa juno Eh adupelo yé adupelo Balagba jupelo Obito adupelo Nili adupelo wa le ju Pro community Koya doctor sabi talk sheni le uké Eh moki obaye baba mi Mokwe ehi eh egomitie ajodala Sori etouy Eh baba wa omoboryo wo ekou chari bili bini Ogwe matiye Orono atukoma jukwe fong Gubwa Baru koi rino ni Kabawa soroni paro petition Beno de ni moki baba wa Eh ba 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 bashigou Che moko pe wadaja Eh eda iboyon shiwa keduwa voyon silo Ochegon Eh adoptant de tokojagou Yé kadeche program botan Mon konvitele konto ché Si ba adupelo de louncha Eh bugwai yé lo lo fe mi moki bubwa Kalakata Bugwai kolo otonge Eh diatriolo etabani kolou eh konsiwa Eh like lajine mama losori amaw website Itoua So that Ikolo yé ama wobe Emariya on millions of Inyo so mama Si ya ino de ma kriche Eh tabafe she ikolo eh konsi awasolo solo Boya awa tetimonitabawa tetimo taba wotie balu kou Bashin solo lowo lowoy Eh piwa lati bere Ba woni Olo shite Wobiki bite ba alagba yé Elé be ikolo yé Eh kilade fe viché Ojese akoua Nori oroi radio Eh ilé odutoa Yé nonio Eja gong kotti baba wa Eh baba mi Olubé du tanso Chèl boyé tanso ipa ipé anit Gubwa kalakata Eh yo lugo Awata anso Gubwa ala jony Owoy lati to parako Lati deko de butu yakode Tori kwekoua sidia joku Awe watidi a joga Eh onyé anu yoba okinko Eh awa first of all we pay Ironi Enowaku Tori kini amo onkoto iski awa yewa ninuli Gubwa watan solo lowo lowoy Aba wati amanshe Oseani to bashifri je Odeja ipé towa olati okedele Eh lipoke dekindali ino Otse kodo metambi Odeja siyani ti nonche Minouli Hmm kusani ti o rea sholatilo Beno ni kusani ti o rea tutulatimo Obadji si lo fe konsuri Obafé lo moto tu kastan And twenty two Eh akbar ono rumpi Tori ki laje gele Eh tori amon generation Ah wé lowa tombo Eh amoto tikuro ni le alay Tom simon Anso ro wono jati tioni Yé kabi baba wa lube de che So June twelve kilobi Kilofa June twelve Kalou moro June twelve Wa olosite Eh ala eton onolele Gubwaisi wa tauti kwanon Eh bubwé non lama wu posita Korowa emiati koli dayo Tori kini ajon shishé Awati olon fungori ofe Kalé gojuba osita Atoto olon funi ori ofe To dekpe baywa tipé palawonlo Ati anitolo funi ori ofe Lati le radata lati le mati elewa Queen rey ajoy Konisoa ku ni yé rewa Anon lowoba amabawa be Eh deka tumaloni onikere Eh modipelo wa wo elebe mi Okemi pekindasi etu non Eshe gonyo ala fi olon kunifu asile ono
To eshe gani ah doctor sabi Eshe adupé ti ebawadasi Olubé du Edja ki emati Katu joga baba i Ah afetke baba wa eh fatay Oh muri bidou Be Ah I wanna Oye komba bawa soroni Pa petition le ti u antabaye Baba fatay o guri Le yina Ki baba rokbo ri Ki wama murakale Baba fatay o guri bidou Baba fatay o guri bidou Le yina baba wa ah ten ten Ki awana kama murakale Ni ba ibiti Ah konifa ileti amawa Twa yusheni lo south africa Ah bi yushé du Twa yushé kase Amapa de song But tele tele Ma wati Oye ki wati song But Anu eshe Twa eshe ngenwa i Baba fatay o guri bidou
Eshe gani bobole moki Eh le kosi ekabo Eh quadroti ekuboba Eh ni abara she oloru Awanu laama wa Eh inu laama ba Ah ni fra washi awati Eshe gani Okwa Eh Yé ké bela etoni kini chefoua Eh ni abara achet si olon axia wan toni le yoruba Eh un contest wadju I ba petition Eh ah wé yon didé ondèn Ondèn biyajou Ni ayitou le biyajou Ah ni abara sholon Ni bata lafmaro sebe di si Ilé lerini pa petition amadibe Chugong ba koto dien Koi dokon Dfoua oni wipé Eh Idasé to ilati awa wati Awani ne aspro Ofa se Odiakoto diapé amwipé Awai gogolagoro ilowa Awali akakala mashiki Itori bubwa lamon Koto fujua woy nyawari nili Eh lumi o tero Diende bitu ra data Eh lumi to mara data la Isé di medioti So Opalo kodiakambosore Wanyakambosi Eh bubwaga ilori ni batiya wojoba Nigeria Tuwa gwe information jadi ni Odito kodi Tambari anybody toba so anyoro Against joba boari Eh ah wama ati mubule Ishé beni So bobo noto ya kamia fuma Koto mbok Kadi afile mogo koto chelle Oditi lekima wenyawa pata watsi no kuku Odia kembang dien tori pe Opalo kongomi diyakamiyawa moni Ilou Idile wane yoruba Tuwa momo Yé la she sori pe bubwa wata Wanyoke kui Ta de da aspro Awali akakala mashiki petition ju Chugong wa la fa se ju Odeva katiwé rowa wenyawa papa Gubwé yolo ri jo Kabawa Koto ambe shené gebioro Eh mi Ne pa isoloru Awama karogi awala kodi Che bobwa wolo riwa Tande pastos Tande istamik Kolas Che warikoto shede nde yorubani Che boshia korimi Ona she pey Konsumo le karogi rekotou Toda mexico Tabala yé ni Ne pa ibaboni Ni pa muslumi ni Olu akewa to bed To diapé awa lansolori Gubwa ba yé Idé ni edo diapé Aniba boyi Oloro ni fasé fuyajé Eh jo bubwa wata Aspro Bé pastors Eh bamon ejo ni soro Edja komo wipé Eh wumba lokolo Longa longa fwa e wuni Itori kati Ki Koto majadi tombo Pedige baton Twa tantiwa Swami tontawa Ati awama wati wandai body Fu atu diapé Mati wano jobanyé Ni wati wano Koto desofobi Pe to Otuwa monsion Tori pe Nigeria o existio Chugong dieté akodadi Kosi koto banu Atukeda Gabi Nigeria mon Amaga me chanté espaya I want yo koya Oni awa se sharia Constitution Nigeria Coexistimone Tori pe The constitution has been declared As not envoy Tori pe Mini to constitutioni So kosi koto banjua kakop Konti awa bayefaboni pe Awadi de kafé Bobin Akéba Ona konyo jota afile Bah bayesoro Tali riké amadé sorowa Ono anioro petition I want to diadu Oh oh Matope They will not allow Nigeria to This is a great Ki ni kato panagiri Apolo Niko furo Bimandwa together That's a giant country Tomás of Ama le karo ogiri Ah neto Nadi sa kafé Bobiniva One black One fane Mushma black One halemo ani Awali wabara Jolo Ni le onefra Ni bafun Ona she beni Edja kadi deka Baraku Ni oni okwé ruwi I want to diawale Wawa Tomai pe Etowani le Dilime Etwa lü Gabi le Awakaro ogiri Tomai korowa Ni wan koto fishoro Ayewa ni wanjé Tafia diwa Tomai komo Padie Dian trolefa Pawalu Edja kadi deka Mwipé Bobo koto mbok Ombo Emma tora Yé obobole ti joba Wadi swasi no Wadi kaba koto mbok Ala eda wale che fui Ona sheyi Onon de rokwa I be I want He said La la wa she Ah se politics so Eh ite ba boté Badé Omoy pe Koto so You do to Eh to Or opposition Carry Five billion signatures Land need Nadi ba Kolo kwé ru To ba Ene koli ba Dasu pe Omole karogi Artist Nati diadi Wadi halemo wa Emma One halemo ani Eh one Alauda Kini koto filo De to dien Katali tokasi pe Odja kaka Fe zopé Afé di Nigeria Anika Nikaku Ni okwé ru Tori pe Yano Yano fijewa Wadi fe make sure So Le wali Le fulari Gubwa la Kontunama Koto shela In south african republic Ona goasi Luwa Ilé wansi Ona sheyi wa Potan Wobita Worish Shawa Wajewa Ati Vile di starwa Tofé Pamo Kama City Watuwa Mobosity Ilé Wato Ké Oma ke Adanika Ma Kuska Jordi to Paris Kawa palewaru Edja kandadi Tori pe Asikoto Fatama Biniwa Omoba No akishé Eh ru Fashion Omoba Padasi Orya diwa Ni abara shoda Orya diwa Konisuta Emma diaki By lasko eshe
To olubé du She be Sasombi
Eshe Goro Shido Lawa Li Kuma Puti
Marudji Ba i To mufeki Ebami Pre Babami Arule ten ten Ni pa bitwa Bache Ni pa konifa Tori amon agiakala Ah Well Bon Tari Ya Wati
Ah moki Mo She embami Emba yé She ju Eshe ju De la Adres Wé Eshe Eshe Moki Bubwa Alori konio Ala yoyo Otaku Awaye Lagare Le du mori Ah moki Yé baba mi Ne nulé Ah baba mi olubé du Moki Ekuchet Takutakun Latékan Ekou Baba Eh modeki Baba wa Olibido Moki bobwé Yakoni Tiwa Ni ori koni Eh lagare le du mori Orono asofu Gubwa Gébi Shewa Wasi Banish Tomo Barare Le du mori Ah moki boboa Ah mode fe fi Akoko i Boufe Kibo Ani South africa Bubwa wa Omoy Ati Awani South africa Eh ati She Takutakun Ah ni South africa Bifun Ah boti On fe Bunny On the twenty first And twenty second of next month So ah wé yewa Ni lo South africa Ah wan Washi Kotu Jamilo ju Eh ni Lo Awabawa Kowambe Twé Wati Kubwa Omoy Bajo Eh beno la de tuliba Baba Konolati Keptown Ah lati Iluke Eh bobo Megbe Yoruba Nation Tuwa Tuwa She Pa Demek Eh wati Baba Kubwa No jo Si Ah wano Duro Gébi Ah supporters club Fum Ah konifa ileti Afé Like So bubwa lombo Beni Awanoti Awani Ah do Benbi Awanoti Kuarawajo Kodá Ah amatu Watoma Fi Lucy Wani Body Ne Ojoye Eh bubwa No Otuwa Le Kodá Eh wanké Ni koni Bouvousela Ni lo South africa Bi Si Wama Fung Filiba Ni oli Papa Eh ati She Tu Yé nosile So Ojoye Mani Akbaragon Eh bonbon Akosi Eh boboli Le Di Lu Mawi Pe Eh to fe Diadi La Ben Nigeria Tuwa Kini Banish So Ah adupelo Walon Tori pe Etotito Gébi Ashé Fe Kori Olonti Diakou
Eh, aussi, c'est pour tout de suite football. Football, le man, moi, oui, y'a, quand il fait la voix, tu l'écras, tu l'écras, tu l'écras.
Ami ami If you need to call, I do call, I look on my video. I need to buy a lot of money. Um, he don't do a lot of it to wear the thirty seven. He will, he will, he will, he will be a job. Where, 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 where? Original, original. Okay. Edjo, Edjo.
Sadiki, what's so sad?
Edjo.
Sadiki, it's so sad. Um, more, it's very, it's very bad. I saw a scene in United Arab Emirates. Car could have been with you, Roma, uh, Asian country. Maybe it is one of the hundred ram. One of the hundred ram farm to what? Me, you, eh, I'm on to what? They outside you, eh, on the drum, not in a comfort. We see who are she, she, he, oh, the really commerce in the balloon. So he is on the law, so my, he is here, so you have to bad day. See only the United Arab Emirates, only on the ground. I should go.
Um, original, the original, it's so, she was a blue was better. Talolo, I party, no? I'm a Jew, no? Talolo, I party, eh, yeah, but I'm a little bit older. For security. Baba, me, me. I'm back on farm international. Back, back on farm, little, little, I partner, back on farm. Okay, 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 okay. Edjo, Baba, me, me, oh, come, come. Baba, Baba, me, me, I'm a, you know, eh, you know, come, come. T, move, F, B, and when you are Sony South Africa, who are very important. To share, was he, me, lock on sing. Eh, Joe, move, F, K, four minutes, you copy? Eh, that motor, a full region, it only, eh, Joe. Motor, a full region, oh, Baba, me, me, eh, Joe. Eh, ma, be no see me. She, more, let's all. Eh, Baba, me, me, who's your father, that is so. Bad, that can also, that can also. Okay, she's a, okay, she do call you. Six, six. Eh, eh, she, eh, she, uh, eh, Joe, what, motor, Padawa, eh, you, T, one, eh, eh, no, South African, eh, eh, Joe, only, I need the players. Ne, lo, South African, eh, eh, T, eh, bad, eh, Babo, Dada. Ne, lo, South African, eh, Joe, eh, consider, eh, me, I roll, eh, Baba, ten, ten. Oh, a very important.